Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, friends and neighbors. Welcome to another meeting of the State and City Council. It is Monday, the third of October in the year 2022. We're here at the State Community Center. And welcome, and we're gonna go to work. We'll start with the flag, so please. Hi, Chris Lee. This is a line of the United States of America. A two-year contract for which stands One Nation Underground in the District of Park. Thank you. At least once a year, I'd like to remind whoever's here of these meetings that this little bit in the flags, this business of underwiso, not able to be divided, should really apply to us more than it does anymore. But I hope people take it to heart. Okay, announcements additions to the agenda. None? Any? Declarations of expat content, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? None? Very none? City, state, and employees here who have some service recognition. Alyssa, listen to this, please.
Absolutely, Mayor. As the council is aware, every year we try to recognize all of our employees who have anniversaries that fall on five, ten, fifteen, twenty, et cetera. And so tonight, we've got two employees who met those criteria this year. The first one is Stephanie Rubel. It doesn't look like Stephanie was able to join us tonight, but Stephanie's been in the city of Stateon for fifteen years. Stephanie has worked as a library aide and now as a library assistant at the State and Public Library. She primarily focuses on marketing, adult and teen programming, and collection development at the library, but wears many hats. She is a member of the Oregon Library Association, Oregon Young Adult Network, and tries to attend the annual OLA conferences to continue her education. Stephanie earned her bachelor in arts and English at the University of Puget Sound in Tacoma, Washington, then returned to Stateon where she grew up when she graduated. On her off time, Stephanie enjoys gaming, reading, and playing the Ovo with the Salem Pops Orchestra. She also serves on the Board of Directors for the Salem Pops. So, congratulations, Stephanie.
Thank you. Thank you for the good work, Stephanie.
Uh, what's, what's the word?
Next up is Police Sergeant Michael Meeks, who is here with us in the audience, and it looks like he's got his wife with him as well. He's been with the Police Department for twenty years. So during his twenty years of service to the city of Stateon, Sergeant Michael Meeks has held the role of police officer, police sergeant, field training officer, firearms instructor, TASER instructor, less lethal impact munitions instructor, reserve coordinator, many other various tasks and minor assignments. Sergeant Meeks has served as a member of the Fraternal Order of Police, International Association of Law Enforcement Firearms Instructors, and the Oregon Executive Development Institute. Prior to working for the city of Stateon, Sergeant Meeks also worked for the city of Harmiston and the city of Pilot Rock. He holds an associate's degree in criminal justice from Blue Mountain Community College. In 2018, he received an award for recognition of outstanding service. Sergeant Meeks' family includes his wife Rebecca, as well as his daughter Jerika and son-in-law Landon, who are both attending college at Utah State. His hobbies include hiking, photography, and dual-sport motorcycle riding. He also works with the Scouts, BSA, was scout master for ten years, a member of Kiwanis, and a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Congratulations, Michael. Come on up, the mayor's not supposed to be there.
Sergeant, thank you, thank you, sir. Do you want to take a picture? Wow. Don't remember this publicity sound. Right on. How's that? Okay. Thank you, sir. There's very much more of that. Nope. Okay. No appointments this evening?
Thank you.
All right, there's, there's more. Public comment this evening? Yeah? Do we have any public comments? Have you signed up for it? Did anyone, or do anyone in the audience need to speak to the council this evening? Okay. We'll be on the consent agenda from September fifteenth, City Council Work Session Minutes, and September nineteenth of 2022, City Council Regular Session Minutes. Could we have some action on those items, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And then we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Okay. I have a motion to approve the consent agendas as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, a motion in the second. No discussion on those? Ms. Recorder, would you pull it down someplace?
Counselor Orment?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Okay, there she is.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. All right, under General Business this evening, Resolution Number 1045, adopting revised fees and charges for various city services for the 2022-23 fiscal year. Alyssa, would you take us through that in the staff report, please?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight before you is consideration of a revised fee schedule, which includes three additional fees that include a fee for water meter tampering, grading permit fees, and private swim lessons. These were some fees that got missed or were found that we were needing to add following the original adoption in June of the fee schedule. The, as you can see on the staff report, we talked a little bit about why these fees are being added. The water tamper, water meter tampering fee is being added to cover the costs associated when a customer who's had their water shut off or not in payment tampers with the water meter to turn that water meter back on. This is an issue that we actually ran into a couple times in the last couple of months, and we have no recourse to, when they are essentially turning it back on without us knowing and using tools that could cause damage to the water meter. We have additional support. Lance, I know is here virtually, and he can add on to that as well as the grading permit fees, which the purpose, so moving on to the grading permit fees, the purpose of these fees is to allow developers and builders to perform early grading activities prior to their site development permits being issued. This will allow them to complete earthwork and grading activities prior to that weather conditions arriving, which usually is around October fifteenth. This, these, this weather can potentially shut down development for weeks and/or months. Finally, a fee has been added for private swimming lessons. Private lessons are a frequent request by our pool patrons who prefer a private swimming lesson or want to utilize private lessons when regular swimming lessons are full. So those are the three fees that staff has proposed. If you have questions, staff is ready and willing to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes?
I'll start with some questions if I may.
Okay.
First one is, I need to understand exactly what constitutes tampering when it comes to the penalty. So how's it defined? So when it goes before the judge, how's the judge gonna distinguish what is and what isn't?
So, Brian, I'll, I'll try to answer that. So as you know, we have certain customers in our city that do not pay their water bills. They get notified in advance that the shut off, that they don't pay their water bills by a certain date, that the city will shut their water off. They do not come in, they do not pay their bills. Our public work crews go out and lock their water meters, turn it off and lock it, so they cannot have access to the water. They are now, there are some folks in our community now that are actually cutting the locks off the water meter and turning it back on. There has to be a penalty for that because it takes us time to go out, turn it back off, put a new lock on. There have been times in the last several years where the people that do this actually do damage to the meter and the water service, which could cost hundreds of dollars to fix. We have no recourse to go after these customers. And so this really is something to protect the city and account for city dollars to go out and, and turn these, these meters off.
And Counselor Quigley, I'll just add, this isn't something that goes before the judge. It's a fee that we would add on to their water bill in order to have it added basically to turn it back on in a legitimate way.
Sure, but at some point, everything goes before the judge, whether it's in the public mind or an actual physical judge in the courtroom. I'm trying to understand exactly, I mean, I don't want us to be abused while getting at, I want us to be legitimate. What, can you just describe what a lock is, Lance, without getting too far into it?
Yeah, when you turn the, when you turn the meter off, it aligns with a, it's almost like you put a padlock in it.
Okay.
And lock that. And so what they can do is cut that lock completely off, turn the valve so the valve comes back on.
Okay.
It's not easily done, you really have to make effort to do it, which is why they can cause damage to the system by doing that. And we, again, we have had those issues in the past. I have to look in our code, though, also. We already may have something to address that issue as far as tampering, not only just tampering, but abusing the city's water system, or any system for that matter. If you're found doing it, there are penalties. But I'd have to go and recite me the code. I believe there is something in the code. Mr. Fleishman is on board here, I think, as well, and he may know that since he's, he knows the code much better than I, because it's his job, but, and so if Dan and you don't, please step on, I mean, I could be completely wrong, or...
No, I, I cannot help you on this one.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'd like to back it up just a little bit, because I have questions about, the first thing that I hear is, we have people in our city that don't have running water to their house. So the first thing I would like to know is, what process do we go through to try to help them financially to pay their bills? Are we connecting them and walking them through, like, there's this resource over here, or this one here? And then, secondly, the language used is a little bit alarming, "Go after our customers." Like, I'm not okay with either of these things here. At this point, I'm gonna be an absolute no on this type of, of a fee without some more explanation here.
Okay. Well, I apologize if that's what you heard, "Go after our customers," because that's
not what I'm talking about. Really, if you want to put that into play, it's more like, protect our citizens from abuse, and that's, and really, this is, that's what it's about. So we don't have to spend city tax dollars fixing repairs to a service line that goes to an individual home that we have turned off. As for the process, Counselor Hook, I would rather have Susanna or Alyssa perhaps talk about that process, because I'm not directly involved with what goes on as far as how long we give them. I believe it's like up to two months of warning, that they're already behind one month, and then we send out notices the following month, and if they don't pay within a certain time period, then we go out and we turn off their, their water meters. I do know my general, my fellow force employees go out and individually put door hangers on each door the day before the turn offs, so they're well aware of this taking place. But the exact process, I think I'll look to, to the finance department to let you know what that is.
And we're actually gonna ask Tammy to chime in. She's not the utility billing clerk, but she sits right next to her, and I often field those questions, so she'll be able to, to give you that information most specifically.
Yeah, because I work, work on both finance side and administrative side. So there is a process, and like Lance said, people have to be at least two months behind before they're even notified of a possible turn off. Delinquent notices go out the middle of the month. Then after the first of the month, it's around, I want to say, shut off notifications of on like the ninth of this month. It's giving them like a three-day period to contact the city, make payment, or set up options. We offer extensions, we offer four a year, and all they need to do is call in and communicate with us. We also always offer different options for assistance. Right now, there's been a great program, Low Income Housing Power Assistance, I believe it's, yeah, I think it's a federal program, but they have been very helpful in helping many community members get paid up, caught up on their bills. So it is a process, it's not like we call them one day and their water's turned off the next. They've had like two months to either communicate or get caught up on their bill.
Thank you, Tammy, appreciate the assist there.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor.
Counselor Hook again, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm just, I've never really understood, you know, giving a fine for something for someone that can't pay for something already. It just seems like it's, it, it doesn't really help. You see that in, in a lot of policing stuff, where now, when someone doesn't have a taillight, they'll offer like a voucher to go somewhere and get the taillight, because they know that giving the ticket doesn't actually do anything for the person that can't afford to fix the taillight. They try to fix the problem instead of get them over to the place where they would then go with judge. So I'm just curious if we can find some type of other cities out there that are doing something different other than tacking on more, more fees for something like that and, and getting customers to the point where they're cutting locks off? I mean, if a customer's without water for a certain amount of time, I would think that there'd be something, something else that we could do to help our citizens to, to get them the assistance. Sometimes people are so, they're, no pun intended, they're literally go drowning in all of the things of their lives that they, that they just, that bill is just so miniscule to them compared to everything else that they're dealing with. So sometimes a compassionate phone call that's like, hey, what can we do? Not just a letter, but how can we help you to get you connected with somebody? Are you having, having trouble getting a hold of the program? Because we know that not all government agencies are really creative running their programs. Sometimes they're months behind in helping people get assistance, and then we're putting extra fees on them as they're still waiting for this system to come through for them.
All right, thanks. That's good. Something, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is this fee, this fee is assessed only if they, the water meter has been tampered with? This is not something that goes on their water bill if their water is turned off? Is that my understanding?
Correct. Yes, that is correct. Basically, it's only if the water's turned off and they turn it back on themselves by tampering with the water.
They tamper with city property, which is the law that we put on there. It's destroying city property, essentially, and then potentially destroying our city property.
Please need to be quiet, it's not even a meeting.
Hey, Lance?
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask this, Lance, maybe it's already been asked and answered. How common, how common is this? Have, half a dozen incidents in the last six months last year? What do we look at that?
No, it doesn't happen very often. I would say six to ten times annually.
I will say that one of the reasons why this came up is it literally happened twice within the past two months. One, we turned it off, they tampered with it, they turned it, we turned it off, they tampered with it again, and we realized that we had no recourse, because there's nothing nerdy scheduled to encourage them to stop doing that. So that's, that's why this is added to the schedule, or recommended to be added to the schedule.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Can you just tell me a little bit more about that situation? Like, obviously, this was going on for a while, so what was happening on their end? Were they not communicating? Were they, because if we offer extensions and we offer payment plans and assistance, what was happening there that, that it wasn't connected?
I'd rather not get into all the details, but it was, it was a domestic dispute among people who lived on the property, and it was complicated, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Well, I, I have never heard that it's, you know, a good policy to create an entire regulation over one incident that we couldn't get under control. I would love to see, like, or, or hear even privately, what other steps were taken to figure out what the situation was behind this and how we can help this one incident before we start stacking some new fee on there. I just, it doesn't really make sense to create an entire, an entire new fee, or a new law, or a new ordinance over one thing that we just couldn't seem to, to get under control one time. If this only happens six to ten times in an entire year, but everyone else seems to kind of get with the program, once they get their finances in check, one, one incident doesn't really, doesn't really make sense for us to be sitting here spending all this city time, even bringing it to city council. I, I'm very confused by why, why we're even talking about this right now.
So just to clarify, this wasn't one instance, the, the one I, I didn't want to get into details with was once. There was another one as well within the past two months, and, and from what we're hearing from, from Lance and others, it's, you know, several times a year that this happens and we don't have a fee recourse.
Okay, thank you. You both?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Everybody to ask a question about the grading if I may.
Okay.
Lance, how much is 200 cubic yards of material?
About 20 dump trucks.
That's quite a bit.
Yeah.
Is this just being in addition to the discharge thing we had at the last council meeting? Is that how it came up?
No, no, this, I'm gonna say, let me, let me explain how this came up, and this is really something that I believe the city council's been after. I know from Public Force Department, as well as all of the land use side of things for the city. We are trying to be proactive and help developers. This is a proactive approach to allow developers and builders to build earlier than having to wait around for an entire site development permit to be reviewed and issued. And let me just, let me just give you an example, Brian. Right now, we have several development in plan review at the city. One underused apartment complex out on Shaft Road in Wilkerville. That's a big site, it's probably eight to nine acres of earthmoving equipment, and they'll be bringing like 30,000 cubic yards of material in. It might be another month before their site development permit would be ready. And so this early grading permit application gives them the opportunity to get the earthwork material moved in and graded, and their site ready for the remainder of the development to occur when the rains do occur. If we didn't have this, and we had to wait for the site development permit to be issued, it may be November, it may be raining, and they would have to wait for another six, seven, and sometimes nine months before they could do these activities. So we're trying to work with our development community to come up with programs that allow them to develop reasonably. We're still reviewing the plans, we're going through the process, and asking the great questions from them. I know as a personal, as a consultant, my consultant days, most municipalities do have this in their, in their packets. Stateon has never had one. We did it as a trial, a trial program with Wildlife Meadows, when Roger Roberts developed out there. Wally Dean, myself, and Keith worked on a early grading permit, and that's how they worked great. And so I wanted to, the city engineer and I have been talking about this for the last month. We seen with the Shaft Square apartment complex, they're running into October where the rains coming. We wanted to see if we could come up with a way for them to move forward with their development and not stop them from developing because of the weather. And, and so the early grading permit was developed, myself and the, and the city engineer developed it. We were vetted by the city of 30, as well as Julia, and we went forward, we gave to the application to the developer two weeks ago. They submitted all their packets, all their materials, we reviewed it, and we just today issued the grading permit to them, and now they're on site doing all their work.
Great explanation, thank you.
Okay. Other comments, questions, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I know, I know that you guys probably want to move on from this topic, but I just, I cannot understand why we want to treat one of our residents as a criminal for just trying to access something that they need for life and that we wouldn't have other things in place. I would love to know more about what kind of phone calls are given to this person, what kind of actual contact? Do we have a police officer? Why not there after so many phone calls that they don't answer, or letters that they don't respond to, asking if everything's okay? Because to not have water at your home is a big deal. To not have a availability to take a shower is a big deal, and if someone is not able to pay for water, there are much greater things going on in that home that needs to be taken care of. I'm very concerned about the approach that we're taking as a city to putting a regulation on this instead of getting to the root cause, which is the person that doesn't have the money to pay for water. I would like to see this one be revisited and us to go forward with the rest of them, that's what the council desires to have, but I don't think that this is one about making a criminal out of, and putting another fee on top of something someone already can't pay. I don't think that's good business, and I don't think that shows the community that we care about them and their health and their safety.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, well, I tend to be at the same mind as Counselor Hook on what she's saying. I don't think we're, if someone's in this kind of desperate situation, and we're trying to create a steady rate payer out of this person, that additional fine on top of what they already owe is an appropriate tactic. One question I might have is, is, do we have anything in the code that, that creates actual criminality out of this? Are we damaging city property, or are we, you know, there's some, some actual crime in the code that would fit that particular action that would be our recompense? That basically, is it already a crime to, to do that? And if, if not, maybe we look at that instead, instead of a monetary fine, which they've already, I mean, if it happens six to eight times a year, how many times are we actually gonna connect, collect that $350? Zero, is my guess. So that, that's just the way I'm looking at it. So what, what's the actual, what, what behavior leads to that? What criminality is actually a result of that behavior? I don't believe assigning an extra fee, I mean, squeezing extra money out of people that already obviously don't have any, I don't like that approach here. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
I certainly don't want to pay for the actions of another person as a taxpayer. If that individual goes out there and cuts the lock and or damages the water meter itself, I don't want to be under that for that. And so I can understand the charge, and I can understand the reason. The question for me is, is it an automatic 350, or can they come in and explain the situation? We're not, all we're doing is punishing the person that committed an action, not punishing the actual person for being behind on their water bill.
If I may real quick, I think this fee was developed, and it's basically just stat time to do, go back out and put a new lock on. Now, I understand where you guys are coming from, and that's a, this council decision. I just want you to know that this is a penalty that I just want you to know that this is a penalty that was just brought up in there. This was staff time that it takes to, uh, generate the paperwork, generate, uh, the word boarder, and my, my Public Works employees to go out and put another lock on. It's just man hours, um, it's time and materials, and that's what this is. I don't believe there's a penalty involved with it. It's just time and materials to go and redo that. And that's really what we're looking at here.
Mr. Mayor, thank you much.
Yes, Councilor.
So if someone gets their water turned off, it gets to that point, they get the lock put on, they can come to City Hall, they can make a phone call, they can reach out and make a plan to pay their water bill, whatever fashion, give them help with it. And then the city will come out and turn their water back on. And there is no fee assessed. Is that correct? Is there a water connection fee?
There, there is a late fee, um, assessed, but again, there, that's in the current fee schedule. This is, what we're talking about here is somebody who did not communicate, um, did not make up a payment plan within those two months, um, had their water turned off, still did not communicate, turned their water back on by breaking a lock and turning it on. Um, that's what this is for. So it's not, you know, we, we have a lot more water turn offs a year than this. This is, this is the instances where people have their water turned off and did not communicate and turn it back on.
So they're making a choice instead of coming to the city and asking, saying, hey, can I work something out? They're choosing to go out with bolt cutters and cut it off.
Correct.
So it...
And, yeah, Alyssa, it's...
It's, it's so amazing. Oh, Alyssa said they're our phone calls made up. That's perfect. Um, so the water's gonna get shut, whether, whether we do this fee or not, the water's gonna get shut off. If they do not, like, communicate in some form or fashion with the city to make a plan, pay their water, whatever it is. If they do not communicate and they're given those several chances, it's gonna get turned off. This fee is if they are tampering with this and causing the city to have to take money to go towards this. So, I mean, it did some math and it cost us anywhere from $1,700 to $3,500 a year, uh, in time and possible damages. If that's, that's just if the $350 is about that. So that's money, people's money, that we could be spending elsewhere on, on different...
Mr. Mayor. This is Councilor Hook.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that... Okay, yeah, oh, no, I can't.
All right, Councilor Hook, go ahead.
Sorry, the audio is really bad on this end, so it's really hard for me to hear you guys. I'm, I'm like really struggling to hear you guys on this end. I texted Alyssa about it earlier. Um, so I'm sorry if I interrupted there. I thought that you were done, so I apologize. Um, what I, what I don't understand, I, I love that Councilor Ort said something about how much it was costing. Um, how much are these water bills behind? Because if we're gonna spend all this money, we could have actually just had a program put into place for, you know, six to 10, uh, or six to 10 customers' worth of behind bills to have like a grant program that we could do for people that literally cannot pay to the point where they're that far behind that we're about to go put a lock on there. We can have our own program to stop that from happening. I just think there's so many root cause, um, uh, things that we could do to address that, that root cause that's there. Um, instead of getting to this drastic point of adding a fee on or even putting a lock on. I didn't realize we were putting locks on our residents' water, water. Like, water is life. I, I can't think of a person that I know that would be upset that someone like, you know, was starving and went and stole, you know, a loaf of bread because otherwise they were going to keel over and die. Like, I think there's a lot of people that would pull a couple bucks out of their pocket and help somebody. This is water. So there are other things we could do. I would love to see, um, us, us make in-person contact with these people before we go and start putting locks on and, and seeing like, what can we do to help you move this process along rather than spending however many hundred dollars it is once we put the lock on and they break the lock off? There's other things that we could be doing from a compassionate state, um, that we're still gonna end up spending the same money regardless. Whether they break the lock off or not, we could be helping them stop that behavior from ever happening before, like, before it even happens. Just by being compassionate and having some type of, of, um, compassion towards our, our citizens that are having a hard time financially. Clearly, they're having a hard time financially. They can't pay for water. It's water.
Interesting thought, Councilor. Could be, could be bad choices too. But that's a whole other thing to explore. Okay, so anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Tammy, just one more time. We have access to money to help people if they need assistance with their water bill. Is that correct?
I'll chime in for a bit you can add on, but we don't access the money. We get them, we can make them connected with that resource that could get them the money.
We have resources. There are, there is, there are resources out there. And also, I get emails frequently from the sit team from, you know, I just, I just voted today on a, um, gas card for someone that needed help and assistance from the sit team. Just voted, you know, before I came here on, on that issue. And the sit team is available to help people as well in these situations. So it's not, we're, uh, Councilor Hook, I, I understand where you're coming from, but also, like, there are, there are these things in place and you can literally bring a horse to water. You cannot make them drink. And this is fairly similar situation, feels like.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Alyssa, um, you've been around for a while. In my 10 years of being on the council, we've talked about this a number of times. And there's always been support for people to have their water turned off. There's always been a resolution for people to get their water turned back on.
Yeah, we make every effort to not have people without water. There are, there, as Tammy explained, there's the notice that goes out. If we're not hearing from people, we're making phone calls to the people who have their water turned off. Uh, if we have not heard from them. And we take every step that we can to ensure that we're not, that we can resolve this without having to turn water on.
Thank you.
Turning the water off is the last resort.
Alyssa, related question. Um, are we making personal contact?
Yes, we are. Um, our utility billing clerk.
Knock, knock. Hello, Mrs. Jones?
When, and Lance can attest to this too, I believe, but when, um, when we give Public Works the door hangers for non-payments, they go out and physically put the tabs on the doors. And sometimes they do, you know, speak personally to the people.
Okay.
And then everything is listed on that door hanger so that they're able to contact us. And, um, I feel like we have a very compassionate team down at City Hall. And, um, just today, in fact, um, a lady called and, um, you know, I gave her the resources. She said, well, nobody ever helps me. And I said, this program has been great. And I gave her, I emailed it instantly to her. Um, and there's a lot of resources out there. Some people, it's hard for them to make that step. And, you know, we've always told them, if you need extra help, you know, we would try to help them also. Um, there, because there is stuff that we have to do on our side that a lot of these organizations contact us. We have to give them information to make sure that they qualify. And, um, yeah, I feel like there's a lot of opportunities. And just extensions. We are very flexible with that and, um, work with people. Like I said, they get four extensions a year. Pretty much no questions asked. They just need to communicate with the city.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Other questions, thoughts, or will you go to public comment on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I'm ready to move on to the other water question real quick for the pools. I'd just like to know how we came up with the increase? Because I did some research today and it's spot on actually to what the rate should be. So I appreciate staff over there.
Well, thank you. Uh, I was gonna say that there's, there is no real magic, magic science. And we looked at how many students are in the group classes and, and kind of how much that equates to, um, and, and then actually, we were originally gonna propose a much larger fee, looked at other jurisdictions, looked at their fees, made sure that we, um, were doing something that was going to, um, cover the costs of the lifeguards providing that, that one-on-one, um, service and not, you know, sort of being comparable so that it wasn't a, a great, um, burn or a great benefit, um, as opposed to the group lists. And so essentially, that's where we came up with that number, um, in concert with, um, Alyssa as well as our pool supervisor.
Thank you. Good day, Bill. And that's your vote, all right? Other questions, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Hook.
Yes, hello.
Hey, yeah, so I just wanted to follow up on your question about whether they made contact or not. And what I think I heard, and please, someone from the city staff confirmed that this is what I heard because then I'll be definitely addressing this more, um, asking more questions and coming down to City Hall to ask more about it. Um, is that you just go out and pay a door hanger, but there's not an actual in-between step between the door hanger and where you're gonna actually like start to shut it off and put a lock on? And actually knocking on the door and having a human conversation with, with the resident that's living there and saying, hey, what's going on here? Like, how can, how can we help you? Is there, is, is the program just not working? Like figuring out why it is that they're not paying their bill? Because I'm telling you, as a single mother of three children that was just facing foreclosure on my own home, there are a lot of assistance programs out there that you cannot get through for months. Months, we're talking at least 108, 120-day wait. So there may be lots of assistance out there, but it's not always accessible. And I wish that you guys can understand that unless you have been through the trenches, you sometimes don't understand what struggle is. So if you could please confirm that there is actually not a, a portion between the door hanger and the phone calls and letters where you're actually going on, having a conversation and trying to get to the root cause of why this person is not paying before you go and put a lock on their water, which is part of sustaining life? Like, could someone confirm that that just doesn't happen yet?
We, um, as far as I know, we do not personally go out and knock on the door and make contact with them, except for what Public Works does. But they are getting notifications before it gets to the door hanger. Um, you know, they're getting the delinquent notice. They've gotten two bills for the past two. Um, but we do not, the door hanger, do they get how many days? Yeah, they get the door hanger and then they have, I think it's three days before they're going to have their water shut off. Um, and this fee we're talking about is not the fee to shut their water off. This is because they are deciding to go and cut the lock. Um, they could contact us, set up an arrangement, and most likely have the lock removed by the Public Works and get their water turned back on. And also to address, um, you know, the assistance programs. If we are aware that the person has applied for assistance, like the program I spoke about earlier, we make note of that and we do not shut their water off. If we are aware that they have applied for assistance, even though we realize it could take months before they actually get the check to make the payment. But if, if they, again, they contact with us, we note all that and we do not shut the water off.
But the city could ask them, have you applied for it also? Maybe they, like, does the, does the form that you guys put out there say, please let us know that you've applied for assistance so that we can not shut your water off? Is that actually, is that a disclaimer on there that says, step one, apply for assistance. Step two, let us know that you applied for assistance so we don't shut your water off? Is that on the actual sheet?
I, I, I do not know what the door hanger says or what the notice says. We start thinking, looking at that to get back to that.
I, I hope that you guys can understand that I, it's not that I don't think that it's horrible that people are cutting locks off. I do. What I'm saying is, why are we not addressing something that's our policy first that we could do to help our citizens before we're doing something drastic about like putting more fines on them, cutting? Let's, let's try to make it so that the behavior doesn't happen at all. Let's try to do one more step to make sure that the behavior doesn't actually happen. Because it could be something as simple as they just didn't realize they could tell us, I applied for assistance. It's pretty hard to humble yourself to the point of applying for the assistance, let alone having to then start telling everybody, hey, I applied for assistance. It's pretty hard for humans to do that. So if there's not an instruction that says, please do this so that we know not to shut it off, I think that would be maybe a first step before, uh, uh, our city council voting on, yeah, let's go ahead and start doing, like, doing this, this reprimand for them cutting off. Let's just try to make it so the lock doesn't get cut off. Addressing behaviors seems to work for a lot of different, um, parts of our life, including police. Police try to target addressing behaviors before they take people off to jail.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, we have ample opportunity to address the behavior. This is the unresult of them not taking advantage of it and taking the lock off. So I'm ready to make a motion on this resolution.
Okay, yeah, let me ask if there's any public comment on this beyond what the council is, is now through tonight. Any public comment? Okay. We're all gonna go to the decision.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion to adopt resolution number 1045 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. I motion a second to adopt resolution number 1045, adopting revised fees and charges for various city services for the 22, 23 fiscal year. Any supporting discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna be a yes on this. And I think that it's possible for us to look at the steps that we take. And if there is more contact that we can make with people, um, you know, before it gets to the shut off point, then if, whatever is feasible for us to do, um, I mean, I'd love to see that happen.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is Councilor Hook.
Yes.
I'm gonna be a no on this because I, with this conversation, I do not have faith that we're gonna go forward on anything else to help make contact and stop, you know, help, help our, our customers. Um, I think it's been really clear that it's, it's really mostly about, um, reprimanding people, not really helping them. And I find that to be, um, very disturbing. So I'm gonna be a really hard no on this one for that reason.
I know what we could do. After the first of the year, when one of us, maybe both of us don't have a job with the city, maybe we could collect the door hangers and go out and knock on doors in the evenings. I might do that as a test.
I don't think the, the non-city official should be going and knocking on people's doors for city business.
I won't be a city official, just a citizen. I'll come and get you and take you with me. You wanna do that? Be a positive thing. I agree, we ought to make more contact. Something to think about. Anyway, uh, are we ready to go to a vote on this? Any more discussion? All right. Emily, would you pull the council, please, on that question?
Councilor McDonald?
No.
Councilor Quigley?
Yes.
Councilor Hook?
No.
Councilor Ort?
Yes.
So it's a tie and the mayor is deciding. So, Mayor Porter?
Yes.
Question of houses?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, communications from city staff, State Police Department, National Child ID Program.
You'll ask Captain Johns to come up and talk about that.
I'm here.
There she is.
I'm ready. I know.
Welcome.
So, we've instituted these little kits that can be handed out to families, and we've actually handed some out at National Night Out and Summer Fest. Basically, it's a kit with a DNA swab and then fingerprint kit, so if families want to collect that data and keep it safe, we suggest keeping it in their home safe, and then there's a little ID card that they can keep in their wallet as well. So, very quick presentation tonight, but just to let people know that we do have these available at the police department, they can pick them up there, and then we have them handed out for our community events as well.
And Captain Johns, can you remind them kind of how they're used and why they're important?
So just a safeguard, in case there's a child that has run away or for some other reason is missing, some sort of either, it gives the statistics on back, but just for protection of children and a quick ID of children in case of a missing situation.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Captain.
Yeah.
Would you, did you say that?
Yeah.
All right.
So you're saying there's a, like, a DNA swab, so we keep that as parents?
Yeah, it's for the family to maintain for their records as well as fingerprints.
Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, since we're on the PV, I'd like to ask a question. Captain?
Go ahead.
Captain, is there anything significant, miles long within the PV? You heard a lot of recognition today for years of service, is there anything else from a training standpoint in the PV?
Training standpoint?
Yeah, certification standpoint, maybe?
Same.
From a certification standpoint, perhaps? Did one of your officers have a great accomplishment recently?
I might be missing one.
I feel like he's throwing a soft one.
No, I'm just asking, I'll put it this way, how many DREs serve the, serve that officer?
Oh, there you go. We have one. So Officer Bevins recently went through a very extensive training, multi-weeks, and then followed up with, has to actually do in-the-field observations that are followed up by reports that are read by drug recognition experts that are working in the field. So it's very, very academic, very intense. So Officer Bevins has achieved that certification.
Yeah, it's a pretty strict program to get into, so hats off, and that's a great recognition for, amen for the team, so.
Thank you. And, and we're very thankful for a couple other agencies and officers that served as his mentors to help him through that, because it's not easy. But it, it's a wonderful tool for us here in State, but also regionally in Marion County and other agencies to access, because DREs are in high demand.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Wonderful to have you here.
Thank you.
Senator Andrew, I'll wait some announcements.
I don't have a lot. I've, I've mentioned in our weekly update that I was, as you know, I was in Seattle to be on vacation, but did spend the day visiting our representatives and their staff to talk about State, so hopefully that will result in the future in some, you know, additional support. We'll see. I think it was a good, a good first step, so that was exciting. Happy to answer any questions that we have on that. I also wanted to let you know that City Hall, we had some construction out in front of City Hall that was a little, little bit more than, than we had been fully aware of. So our, our City Hall offices are gonna be closed tomorrow for the safety of our patrons. We were open this morning, but people were going through some unsafe areas to get into City Hall, so we're gonna close, we'll still be there, and all the other buildings will be open. So that's, just wanted to kind of let you guys know as well as the community, if they're watching, know that the City Hall offices will be closed tomorrow for their safety while we prepare the sidewalk so that there will be no tripping anywhere in City Hall. Any questions for me or staff?
Any more, have any more questions for staff this afternoon, this evening? Okay. Communications myself and/or counsel. Do you folks have, when you can tip around the seat with anything?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Hook.
Yes, go ahead.
I would just like for city staff to test this audio issue that's going on. I've done remote meetings a few times, and it's never been this hard to hear, so this was really difficult for me to be able to understand what was, what was being said. It was quite the struggle, so I would love for them to look into like why that is and maybe the positioning of it. Something's changed in the last few meetings, so if you guys could look into that, that would be great.
On the plus side of that, Counselor, you come through very clearly and easily understandable. So it's working on one end.
That's great, but if I'm having a hard time hearing it, I'm gonna assume that people at home might have it a little bit garbled as well.
Okay, all right. Well, go ahead.
I was gonna say, we will look into that. We did have a change in the camera and within the last few meetings, so that may be what is causing it, but we will continue to work on troubleshooting.
Okay, all right. Fine, thank you. Other things? Anything? What? Yeah, I guess. I'm still not sure I heard you comment. Oh, yeah, please, yeah, thank you, if you do that. I have an announcement. Counselor?
So that, just as a, well, I don't wanna speak as, as the city council, but I just wanted to recognize the passing of Suzanne Brandt, who was recently a president of the library board and a really big advocate for, and I'm pretty sure that spearhead of the library levy, did an amazing job of that. She passed away recently. And then Carol Zokeski?
Zokowski.
Zokowski. She volunteered at the library and the Friends of the Library store, and she was part of the Santiam Heritage Foundation, and I got to hear her speak recently about, well, not recently, but the last few years, about State and Salinity history, and it was just really, you could just tell, I mean, she, she grew up here, and so she had family ties and whatnot, but she was just really passionate about the history in this area, and so it was really sad just to hear her passing, and so we just wanted to recognize that.
Thank you. Thank you for that, so, yeah. Anything else this evening? Eight o'clock. If nothing else, let's go home. Thank you, good night. Have a good evening.